Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Portsmouth School Board meeting for June 23, 2011. If I could ask the superintendent to please take the roll call.
Ian Mayer?
Here.
Carol Chelman?
Here.
Rebecca Emerson?
Here.
Dexter Legg?
Here.
Kent LaPage?
Here.
Ann Walker?
Here.
Mitch Schulman?
Here.
Tom Martin?
Here.
Leslie Stevens?
Here.
Clay Hayward? And Linda Brillette?
Here.
So, if I could ask you to join me in a moment of silence, I would just like to ask all the board members, one of our own this evening, Clay Hayward was readmitted back into the hospital, so if we could send our prayers towards him this evening and have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A motion to accept the minutes from June 14.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions, edits, corrections? All in favor of accepting?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Anybody signed, I doubt it, doesn't look like anybody signed up for tonight's public comment. Okay, so we'll just move right along to the special presentation part this evening.
It'll be a special introduction. Mr. Ducharme is here from student council to introduce the newly-elected student member of the school board.
Good evening, everyone. Not sure if any of this is on. My name is Robert Ducharme, for the record. I'm one of the co-advisors to student council. First of all, my apologies on behalf of Savannah Fedaro. She can't be here. The good news is she's doing what she wanted to do. She's actually down at freshman orientation at Simmons College, so she sent her apologies and couldn't get here tonight. The other good news is that you now have a new student counselor who is Liz Boynton. Liz will be entering her senior year, and I can tell you, as much as Savannah in my four years there, probably increased maturity-wise and intellectually more than anybody I've seen, Liz is probably already there. She's started more advanced than most, if not all. I think you'll really enjoy her. I've heard rumors that she's been described as Phil Boynton's, who was previously working with you, little sister. You'll soon learn to know that it will soon become that Phil is her older brother. She's a very separate and distinct personality, but very mature in her own right, so let me help you welcome Liz Boynton. I don't think Liz was planning on staying here for the meeting, but Mr. McDonough was kind enough to invite her to stay, and I assume if you promise that she won't be here too late, she'll probably stay, but I'll let Liz decide then.
No, that's up to you.
No, it's fine. I don't mind staying.
You're more than welcome.
You're more than welcome to stay if you'd like.
That's the most rousing endorsement. I don't know if you're upset. No, I don't mind staying.
Reason to keep the meeting short.
It's fine. I don't mind. Nice to see all these people.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Up for the welcome.
Grab a seat. Thank you, Mr. Ducharme.
When does she get a plaque? When does she get a plaque?
We can give her the mayor's.
As long as we don't give her Phil's old. Okay, great. Welcome aboard.
Thank you for having me.
You're welcome. Okay, superintendent's report.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before I give the report, I'd like to make a few items, adjustments to the agenda with the board's permission. One, I would ask that under new business, item A, which is consideration and approval of employment, if you would add item three, which is a grade-five teacher at Don Darrow. And then if you could go to under new business items B and C, I'd actually ask that that item be combined into a new motion, a new item, which is consideration and approval authorizing the administration to negotiate regular and special education bus awards following scope review.
Okay, so I'll ask you to reread that when we get to the motion.
I will. Okay, thank you. And so in the superintendent's report, it only contains four items of information. You have in your packet the board and administrator for the month of June. We have compiled the list. I know Steve Zadovic worked with each of the principals and the various teacher leaders to go through this interview process for department heads, team leaders at the middle school, as well as those special education coordinator positions. So you have a memo kind of capturing the appointees for the next few years. You also have from Steve Bartlett and Ken Lynch, basically just information about the contracted service provider awards with HVAC, electrical, et cetera, for the next three years. And then the chair had asked that I provide the report that was presented to the city council on Monday night regarding the charter advisory committee's report. So those are the four items that are in it, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, Kent?
Under item two, which is the department heads, special education coordinators and team leaders, and I did grab the superintendent for a few minutes, I'm having extreme difficulty in that what I consider leadership roles, both under the team leaders and now the four additional areas of department heads under the middle school, that that gives us, including the special education coordinator, we have leadership-type titles now at greater than 14 at the middle school level, and at the high school level, we have seven if you look at it. And even with discussion with the superintendent, he's not sure totally of how the roles of the team leaders and so forth. I think the board, in the very near future, needs to have a description and discussion on this, because these are financial items that do add up. As we know, we're holding some contracts as we get towards the end of the year here, because we're not sure of the financial outcome, just making sure we're covering everything. So again, my main discussion on this is that we now have four, and actually, I know that there's one full department head from health services, Department of Physical Ed and Health Services. You know, now we'll have K through 12. And again, I don't care where department heads are, but it's now something totally is a philosophical difference that we've entered, where before, department heads were K through 12, I was never sure that we got the full amount that we should between K through 12, whether the communications and so forth, and now we have a new type of a layer here. So, very near in the future, I'd like to have some discussion contractually. Team leaders are in there. What's not contractually in there currently are the sixth through eighth grade department heads. Those are new and don't currently write in the contract. Again, I know you're not looking for approval on this, but I think the board, again, if you look at management and you look, you know, if you take the management diagrams of number of leaders into a group, we would have to have 126 teachers at the middle school level to meet this type of thing, and these are not management positions, I want to emphasize, but they are leader-type positions. So, again, something's happened here, and I'm not totally comfortable. I know we had a brief discussion at the last full board meeting a week ago on Tuesday, but again, it's just somewhere I'd like to have this discussion of what we're getting for this, because that's what, you know, we want to make sure the children are getting the best possible education with what we have, but we also have to answer to the taxpayers of why all of a sudden we've put in another layer. Thank you.
Yes, Ann?
My only comment was in regard to the team leaders at the middle school, which I think is a usual thing. My understanding was that there are two teams at each grade, which would make six, and there were seven. So is there a next door?
I guess there's historically always been a unified arts team leader.
Okay, so that's the other one? Okay, thanks.
Okay, no other questions? Any other questions about any of the items on the superintendent's report? Okay, Mr. Bartlett?
Verbal. Verbal on the financial report, because it's, you know, it's an ongoing process, as I said last time. It's a lot of work at this time of year, and we want to make sure everything comes out right. Overall, I believe we're going to come out on the positive side, which was what I wanted to convey, because at one point in time, we were a little unsure with some orgies. So we can make that work. There are a number of areas which are traditionally over and close to over, and those haven't changed any. Maintenance is right up against it, because we had several unplanned equipment failures that need to be fixed during the year that we hadn't anticipated. So maintenance will be right up against their budget as of the end of May, so we'll be a little bit over there. I think the most exciting thing for us is that we were working towards getting greater control over the use of substitutes in the school district, and we still have, don't have the final hourly payroll posted, which that'll happen next week, but based on the estimates that we put together, everybody with all their hard work, we are, we reduce the budget for this year by 10%. And right now, with our estimates, there's an additional savings of eight and a half percent over what we reduced it to. So that's the result of a lot of hard work by the administration and buy-in by the staff. So I think that's exciting that we've been able to, you know, put an initiative in and have everybody buy in and move forward with it. So we've had some good results with that.
In raw dollars, I mean, that's not just a percentage, but that's a pretty significant number.
About $30,000.
About $30,000, yeah.
And so I will, you know, I'll keep working away and getting it refined, and, you know, as we've discussed, we're, it becomes more difficult every year, because the state's giving us later and later information, so it makes it tougher, but we'll get there. But I mean, it's looking like we're going to be on the right side of it, which, you know, at one point in time, we had some concerns, but I believe we'll be okay.
So we should know in July?
Yes. We have only one meeting in July?
Right, the 19th.
Then it, I'll try, I'll, we'll see. I don't want to make a promise that I can't keep.
Okay, any other, any questions? Okay, moving on. All business.
Yes, under all business, there were a couple of items that were tabled at the June 14 meeting. The first one is a request from Danielle Herman to have a one-year leave of absence from Portsmouth Middle School, and I would recommend that.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to accept the one-year leave of absence?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Kent?
I want to make quite clear that this is not for the individual. Do not even know this teacher very well, other than I've met her one or two times and, you know, I've heard very good things. I will not vote for this. I believe it's a precedence that we've gone down before in history. I've had great heartburn and had to have, actually worked with the union in the past, similar type thing. I think if one person needs to make a decision, business decision or a personal professional-type decision, that the school cannot and should not be holding a position like this. Contractually, it's even, it's questionable. Under truth and disclosure, I think it should be noted that this is close to not meeting contractual, so I will not support this again. It's not against the individual, it's against the precedence of allowing future issues like this. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Carol?
I'm going to vote in support of this, because I think it is consistent with the contract and what we've done in the past, and I think it's important that we be consistent with past decisions. I just would have a question as to how this differs from sabbatical. How is it?
Sabbatical requires more years of service in district than one is granted a leave for one year, that can, or a half-year, and so it's either half-pay or full-pay for, you know, half a, you know, but you're receiving remuneration while you're away on sabbatical, and then you promise to come back and work in the district for two additional years.
Thank you.
Any other? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed. Two opposed.
Anyone else? Just, okay, thank you.
And then the second item was a grade-three teacher position at Little Harbor School. I would like to nominate Heather Perrinney. She has a bachelor's degree from Riviera, Riviera College, a master's in curriculum and instruction from Leslie, has 12 years' teaching experience in the Barrington School District.
Okay, motion to accept?
Motion to accept Heather Perrinney's nomination?
Second.
Kent?
And I hate to be sometimes the ugly American.
You just speak in your mind.
I only speak my mind, and I speak from what I feel.
Absolutely.
We're in a financial situation and will be, at least for the next couple of years. I do not know this individual at all. From what I've picked up from the superintendent's report back in regards, outstanding candidate, but I cannot support it. One might say financials are not our responsibilities when this, damn it all, it is our responsibility. This could actually almost pay for two teachers. Let's remember that coming in at $68,000 is only the salary. You also have to put in the benefits, which puts us, you know, in the high 90s. I sometimes think we have to look and see what we can afford. I am sure there are candidates that were with less years of experience that may have been just as good. I know that you interviewed three to five individuals for this job, and again, this is not in any manner against the individual. I'm taking a financial stand on this, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anyone else? Dexter?
You know, when it comes to recruiting and acquiring talent, I think it's an obligation of the school administration to get the best possible talent, because what we know is that the teacher in front of the classroom makes all the difference. And as the administration described this particular job search, as I understood it, by far, this was the best talented candidate. And so I have full confidence that the administration will absorb this salary and will manage to budget and will figure out how to come in and overall will meet our target budget for 2012. So I absolutely support offering a contract to this individual.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. Oh, okay, sorry.
It's okay.
I was looking at the wrong things.
So now we're under new business?
Uh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, right.
So, discussion of the city charter advisory committee report. So I asked the superintendent to pass this out to everybody. I don't know if he had a chance to read it, but I just wanted to bring up a conversation, because there's something in here that I think is not actually what the school board asked for. So I just think we need to have this conversation. So, looking at the first page, number two, where it says reference number 30. I'm sorry, so it's the charter advisory committee report? Not the first page. The first page of that is something different. That's from Attorney Sullivan. Okay. So number two, it says reference number 30, and basically, the charter committee is recommending that the charter language be changed to reflect that the school board has 100% say over negotiations and choice of candidate, and the city council has 100% say over final contract approval. That's not what we asked for. And I believe that there's some potential issues that could arise out of that, this particular scenario, even though they're saying it reflects what is believed to be current practice. I could see a point hypothetically where the school board wants a candidate, and we have the right within our budget to pay for it, within a line item, and the city council says no, and they're denying us the right to hire the candidate we want to hire. I think that's the play out of a hypothetical, and I think that's an issue. I think that's a real concern. So I'd like to, I know Nancy, Assistant Mayor Kleiberg, has asked that the city council have a work session in July.
The 18th.
July 18th, which is the night before our board meeting. I'd like to have permission to craft a letter to the council, clearly stating what we're asking for, and also ask for, I know they're having a work session, and Nancy suggested, you know, in her email, that we can't talk at a work session. I'd like to ask that we be allowed, on this issue, to participate in this work session with the city council, and if not the whole board, then at least I certainly would love to be there to argue. Yes, Dexter?
Yeah, I absolutely agree. In fact, when I read through this, I actually had flagged that item, and as it's written here, that does nothing to resolve the issue. In fact, I'd argue, is it actually may complicate it, because all it is is an up-and-down vote, which in some ways is worse than revising some aspects of the contract. So this doesn't reflect what we asked for. It actually, I think, creates a problem, not resolve a problem, so I feel strongly that you should write a letter clarifying what we're asking for and do everything possible to get that accurate revision into this charter.
Even a no change in the language is better than this?
We would be better off with no change.
Because the implication in the current charter is that we have say, and we just need to exert that right.
Right.
But I think so. Okay, great. Any, yes, Ann?
I would also suggest that when it goes before the city council, that you speak to the public commentary at that time as well, which is something else Nancy suggested. So a letter as well.
Right.
And then a comment with public commentary.
The same night? Is that the same, that would be the same on the 18th?
Well, this is the work session.
The work session.
They're probably going to do it before that. I'm not sure.
No, I mean, the vote to the city council, do you know if the vote is on the same night after the work session?
I don't know.
So to that, the only issue is, I might not be around, because I'm going to be on vacation, so.
Well, if you have your letter.
Yes, so we'll see. We'll see what that works out. Kent and Carol, yes?
So we don't know the vote date on this, is that correct?
I don't actually think, no, I don't. I know the work session.
The one comment towards that is that, you know, it's kind of a, it's a good catch that we have there, that you found. Then I get confused, because then, as you read the last sentence of that same paragraph on page two, "The council should not be able to change the terms approved by those entities." So I, they're not even consistent in what they're saying. If they can't change it, then they can't have a final say. So, I mean, it's very simple. I think somewhere, somebody's made a slip here, and it may be just word change, because if, I wholeheartedly, I think the sentence that makes the most sense out of this is, "The council shall not be able to change the terms approved by those entities." And I think if we have that, the other one should just be stricken.
Good point. Carol, yes, I'm sorry.
My question is just, do we know where that language came from? Since it's not the one which we requested, where did it come from?
Attorney Sullivan.
It came from Attorney Sullivan.
Right.
And I would just say that if you're not available, Mitch, if some, I would be willing, and if anybody else would be willing to stand in for you, that would be good.
Okay.
I think it'd be good to have somebody there.
I was definitely going to.
And then procedurally, where do we go after the work session? Where does it go after that? Do we know?
From the city council's perspective?
Yes.
Well, eventually, this recommendation, this report goes to the council.
Okay.
And they vote yes, no, on whichever ones they're interested in moving forward, and then it's on the ballot.
Okay.
Right, so this could end up being on the ballot, as is, with which, at which point we need to speak up.
Right, okay.
And get it.
Thank you very much.
But it would be nice to get it out before it goes to them. Okay, great. Yes, new business.
New business, great, okay. We have consideration approval of employment. I would like to nominate Rachel Fritchie, who, to be a physical science, earth science teacher at Portsmouth High School. She has just finished her four-year bachelor's degree from the University of Maine at Farmington, just completed her student teaching at Mount Ploue High School, so she would be a first-year teacher, step one on the bachelor scale at Portsmouth High School next year.
So moved. Just to show that I'm not the arrogant man. Now, and let me say, that's a fresh person coming into the school system. I don't know how the heck she's going to be able to live.
I'll second that.
I don't know how she's going to be able to do it. How little are we going to pay her?
Right, okay. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next is the director of school nutrition. I'd like to nominate Deborah Riso. She has 15 years' recent experience working at Phillips Exeter Academy. She has run the Elm Street Dining Hall with some 40 folks under her charge, some 12 cooks. She has some prior experience in, on the kind of private side, and the good news about her is she's also had a foot in the food service directors camp of the public schools. She has a real interest, I think, in nutrition and wellness, and she has her own children that went through the public system, so she's passionate about that. She offers, you know, I think, a change insofar as she's interested in production, menus, kind of hands-on, you know, with folks about producing, you know, great meals. So I think it'll be incremental, but I think she's excited to be here. She's done a number of visits, so I'd like to nominate Deborah Riso to be the food service director.
Moved or approved?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And then the addition to the agenda is to hire a grade-five teacher at Don Darrow. I'd like to nominate Cheryl Fish. She actually has a bachelor's degree from the University of Rhode Island, just completed her master's in elementary education at UNH. She has three years of teaching experience out in Merrimack, New Hampshire, so she'd be a year-four, step-four teacher out of Don Darrow, and really, she's had a, it's surprising how, what a wealth of experience she's had on district and school committees, and she's a leader. Wonderful candidate.
Okay.
Moved or approved?
So moved.
Just a point of order on the documentation that.
Says Little Harbor School, Dexter?
Well, no, that just says step one, not four.
Right, it does.
And this is, I think it's a step-four position.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, good catch. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay.
The next item is actually what I asked for, an adjustment, and that's a combination of B and C on your agenda. I would ask the board authorize administration to negotiate both a regular and special education bus award, following administration's opportunity to do a scope review of those RFPs that have been received.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, yes, Kent?
And just so it's understood, the full contract will come back for a vote at some date.
Absolutely. Hopefully the 19th. Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Consideration and approval for authorizing superintendent to hire during the summer months.
So moved.
Second.
This is a traditional thing that we've always done? Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, thank you. Okay, and consideration and approval of changing employee retirement contributions from post-tax to pre-tax methodology.
Perhaps, Mr. Bartlett, you could speak briefly to that, if you would?
Certainly. The, in the group one, employer group includes the teachers and then what they call all other, and for some reason, historically, when given the choice of changing from post-tax to pre-tax, because it has to be all or nothing, there was some opposition years ago, so it never got changed to a pre-tax benefit for those groups. Everybody else in the city and the teachers all make their personal contributions to the New Hampshire retirement system on a pre-tax basis. With the changes in the retirement system that are almost here and keep going back and forth, it brought it to the forefront again, so regardless of whether the additional 2% increase in employee contributions comes forward, the majority of the employees effective have voted to request that you allow them to go pre-tax on the current 5% and anything else that comes down the road. And so the New Hampshire retirement system requires that the board vote a resolution to do that. There is no additional cost to the school district or detriment to the school district or city in making this vote. It actually would be very helpful and beneficial to the employees that they would get a little extra money in their take-home pay and. extra money in their take-home pay, in tough economic times.
Mm-hmm.
So, I respectfully request that you approve this resolution.
So, motion?
So moved. Second.
Any, any conversation, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Seeing none? Thank you. So, the only other thing here, before committee reports, is to pick a date for retreat at some point this summer, I believe, maybe if we can do it before school starts? Possible. So, the question is, rather than taking out of books now, which we could, we could ask Amy to do a doodle poll, if you know, if you've experienced that before, and put the possible dates, and we can figure out the one that most people can make. Is that okay, Amy? Great.
Do you have a time, Frank?
Well, I'm sorry?
Holden?
Well, that's a good question. So, what do people think? You want to do a more than a half-day? You want to have a robust conversation? You want to do a half-day? We could still have a robust conversation and a half-day. I didn't mean to imply.
I would tend to lean longer.
Yeah.
Tendency is, I don't necessarily need to spend any more time than I need to, but the past two retreats have fallen short.
Okay.
Of the discussion that I think we're trying to have, so I'd vote for a longer period.
Figure out, so we'll do a full day.
I'm with that. Because we really, I don't think we've had an opportunity to really have a robust discussion on a lot of issues.
Year and a half.
And I think it's time.
Okay.
So, I'd be willing to invest the time necessary.
Okay. Great. So, we'll do that.
Are we sure August is truly the best time?
Uh, no.
I just wonder about that. It just is typically a vacation, not, I mean-
I'm open to doing it in September.
For me, that would be better, but I don't know what other people feel.
You could do it on a weekend day?
It's just my, it just would be my preference.
Yeah. That's not a bad idea.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Because you want to get everyone here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, we'll shoot for sometime early to mid-September. As long as it fits into your crazy schedule when school starts.
Yep.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. Committee reports. Now, Tom, we'll add a little technology on here. Okay. Dexter.
So, reporting out in the JBC, starting with Grant, the Grant Street Field. This week, the sod went down. What that means is, the sod normally takes six weeks to take full root. What that means is that the field will be playable by August 1st. They're completing some of the sidewalk, concrete installation, and the snack shack. Parrot Ave. If you've been by there, you've seen the Ram Aggregate, which is fundamentally creating the base for the foundation. You've seen the changes to the parking. We have what we're calling Omni-Busman, somebody that would be available during the main hours of usage for the library and the school, to help direct traffic, particularly with the changes in the parking scheme over the next couple of months. It's going to be particularly challenging for people to find their way down there. So, we've actually hired three Omni-Bus, three individuals to sort of-
Crossing guards, I think.
Yeah. It's more than, it's more than a crossing guard. Fundamentally, it's the same idea, but it's somebody who can not just direct traffic, but answer questions and help people get through that.
Yeah.
And we're, I guess what I'd say is, we're very, very close to having a GMP3. Again, remember, we had a GMP1 for the turf field. GMP2 was for Granite Street, and our final, and obviously largest, GMP is construction costs at Parrot Ave. And we're fundamentally there with some minor tuning. And I think what I want to report out is, through all of that, and we had to do some significant value management to get at our construction costs for Parrot Ave, from a, what I'd call a change that you would be aware of, or the general public would be aware of, is that we've taken the vegetative roof, which is worth $150,000, and we've taken that off of the budget, and we now have that as an add-alternative. So, what that means is that, as we go through the project, if we can find that money, then that vegetative roof gets added back. It's important to understand that we still have a green roof, which is different than a vegetative roof. The other thing that we haven't been able to incorporate yet, that was an add-alternate from the beginning, is the air conditioner chiller. You'll remember that this has been scoped, and it is in the construction plan, to put all of the ductwork in, and everything into this school, except for the chiller, which is a $200,000 item. That has always been an add-alternate. We had hoped through this process, we might be able to add it in. We can't yet. Again, what we're hopeful, as we go through the construction process, and as they go forward, that we're able to find that money, so on day one, it's fully air-conditioned. So, those are, those are the only two items, I would say, that are fundamentally maybe different than how people might have thought about this. Construction is on schedule. And I guess I'd just ask the other Board members, Leslie or Anne, if you have anything to add.
I brought a copy of the sign. This is the sign that's going up, and I'll pass that around, that we received this last night at the meeting, so.
Okay. Great. Steve, or Steve, anything to add?
In terms of being on schedule, we're actually, on the Ram Aggregate piers, we are ahead of schedule.
It's going faster than-
So, we'll be able to start, they'll be starting, I believe, next week, where the permitting for trenching for the concrete, so the concrete also should be ahead of schedule.
So, Dexter, two quick questions.
Yes.
On the two add-alternatives that you talked about.
Yeah.
Is there a priority order of those two?
Um-
Like, which goes back first?
I don't, I don't think we have set a priority for either one. I mean, I, we haven't as a Council.
Okay.
I think individually, we do have priorities.
You have your preferences.
We have preferences.
Sure.
But we haven't gone through that process, yet.
And then the other question is, what is, and maybe it's still a little early to ask it, but in terms of these add-alternatives, what's the status of the 1% for the arts spending out of this budget?
Um, right now, it's still in.
So, that's 150?
That's 160.
We have to find that money. That's not in our budget.
No. It, I, in fact, it is in our budget. It's a soft, it's a soft cost, so it's not part of the construction cost, and it's always been the owner's cost.
It's part of, it's part of, there's a list of items that are under the owner's contingency.
Right.
Currently, it rests, or resides, placeholder, whatever you want to call it.
Okay.
I have, I have a line item in the owner's contingency for that art. And we will be, we've been trying to concentrate very hard as a group to go forward to GMP3, and get close enough so they can finish the buyout, and try to get additional savings. So, the things like the art, and the discussion of what we'll do with furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and technology, has in fact been set aside, and we will take that up again in, starting in August.
Yeah. So, what that, all that means is that, again, we, we've come to fundamental agreement on the construction piece of that project. This is the 30.2 million. But there are also costs, there are also budget items within the 37.5 million budget that covers furniture, technology, and one of those line items is art. And as we go through the furniture and technology detailed cost evaluations, the public art then becomes factored there. So, I would say that we don't have a final decision on it.
Okay.
What I, how I'd describe it.
So, Tom, and then Rebecca.
Aside from the color green, what defines a green roof? And does that negate future installation of a vegetative roof?
No. So, all a green roof means is that it has, it's a reflective surface, and so where the, we have a total green roof on that building. A part of it was going to be covered with a vegetative roof. And, one of the exciting aspects of that is that the middle school is going to use that for program, that the students would actually add to their educational program, something that we don't have today. But, we can always add that back at any, any time in the future. We hope we can add it back during construction, but if we can't, and someday-
Doesn't negate.
We choose to maybe put an item in our capital budget.
And how much is that?
As part of our, as part of our program, we could conceivably add it in.
$150,000.
It's $150,000.
Okay. Rebecca?
I'm just curious as to who defines what art is, and what the acceptable mediums of art are.
Um, there is a, there is an established process by the City Council that itemizes the approach for public art as it relates to public buildings. I can't articulate, Rebecca, exactly what that is, but, but we're sort of following those guidelines. At the end of the day, there will be a committee, and that process does call for the establishment of a committee, and that committee then is authorized to select public art. What we will be certain to do is have representatives from the middle school and the school department heavily on that committee. I mean, is that described right?
Correct. I mean, it's, the documentation for that art ordinance is about the ethic, and fairly well-
It's pretty prescriptive.
Fairly prescriptive.
Leslie, again?
Well, I was just going to say, the process is that, we've met us several times, art speak, and the process would be that we would send out requests for proposals. We'd be very specific about what we were looking for, and, you know, one of the things we talked about is involving the kids in some way, not necessarily their own art, but having them be a part of the process, and so that would be part of the proposal, and then we would get proposals back and go from there. So, that's sort of how the process would move forward.
Right. Okay.
But the point is that, unlike other things going into that building, the JBC does not have absolute authority to make the decisions as it relates to public art, because we're dealing with the City Council's public art ordinance. So, it's, the decision process is a little different.
Right. And the only reason I ask that, I think, is at some point, the Board is, the Board itself may wish to voice an opinion, that if given these choices, I don't know, public art was never part of our conversation when we went for bonding in the first place, so the choice between spending $160,000 on art versus $150,000 on a vegetative roof, I think the Board might have, we don't have this final say, but we have a say.
Yeah. I think that's fair, and I think what we'd commit to is, before the JBC makes any decisions, to get your input.
Okay.
As we make that decision. So, we will, we will do that.
I appreciate that.
We'll commit to do that.
Thank you.
But my understanding is, we actually have to ask permission not to spend that money. Is that correct?
Yeah. The process is that if we choose, if the JBC recommends not to spend that money, that we need a City Council approval.
To not-
To not spend.
To override the ordinance.
To override the ordinance.
Exactly. Okay. Rebecca, yes?
Well, the reason why I asked about art is that sometimes landscapes can be considered art, and so I didn't know, you know, I know there's a fabulous landscape architect from the Netherlands. And so, I was wondering, you know, the 1% is around 150. The cost of the vegetative roof is around 150, and so I didn't know what it says, what's allowed, what's considered art.
The ordinance is very clear, and I can tell you what's not included. For example, you can't make changes architecturally to the, to the structure and call that public art. I don't know, frankly, if it speaks one way or another about landscaping in the ordinance.
No, but, things like a bench that was, you know, considered part of the landscape, but also artistic, would be considered, any of those kinds of things, but Dexter's right, you can't change the design and call it art.
Right. But you just-
No, the point is, I don't, I think we should explore whether a vegetative roof qualifies or not.
Well, because then, didn't you just say that the roof will be set up so at some point you can put a vegetative roof?
Correct.
So, that's not changing the structure of the building.
Yeah. What I don't know, and we'll look at it, is whether the ordinance allows us just to claim landscaping or a vegetative roof as reading the requirements of public art.
Right. And that was what my question is, is what medium is allowed, you know? Cement sculpture, marble sculpture, it, trees are permanent, you know?
But that wouldn't, well, you wouldn't put trees on the roof.
No. I know you wouldn't, but I'm, anyway, I think it's just something that you should check out.
Absolutely. We can check it out.
But part of public is that it's accessible to the public.
Right.
Right. And I wonder, I mean, if you, you don't move.
Okay. No, your point, we should check it out.
I mean, and if it's a visual thing, like you can't climb into a painting, you view it, and the landscape could be considered the same thing. So, that's all I was-
Thank you.
Thanks.
Trying to think outside of the roof.
Went a lot farther than I thought it was going to, but.
All right. And so, we just had a technology meeting prior, so I'll have Tom talk about that.
Thank you. Some of the things we, I just want to go over is, we did a follow-up to the presentation where we had Kathy Higgins in from the DOE last week, as well as Tom Lottz and myself. We made a presentation on the ClassLink pilot that we had been doing, and the follow-up, we were waiting to get a lot of different information in terms of a configuration and some pricing, and so one of the things that we were able to get this past week was an actual budgetary number for this type of a solution. And, a couple of the things that we were really trying to hone in on were just understanding what the actual virtual desktop environment would look like, what the ClassLink components would be that would operate and function on top of the virtual desktop environment, as well as understanding how and what type of solution we would be able to pull together to present for the middle school. So, not just looking at the entire district, and what we'd be looking for as a eventual solution, but looking for something, because we've got an immediate need at the middle school, as well as just looking at the entirety, but also just the high school. To give you some just order, rough order of magnitude, some of the pricing that we've been taking a look at, just for converting from a traditional, what we would call fat client, fully-loaded desktop with a hard drive and all of the associated peripherals that are going out into the field, that would roughly be about $1,000 per terminal. In a thin-client model, you would be looking at something that would be south of $500. So, you're roughly looking at about half the money, but also, the extra money would be that since you're delivering a thin-client environment where everything is going to be centralized, we have some additional costs in the back. be centralized, we have some additional costs in the back. So we're going to fine-tune some of the budgetary numbers, and one of the things that we're trying to take a look at is, as we go through some of this budget build, is trying to do some selection in terms of what are the things that we know that are working. So the pilot that we had started about a month ago is going to continue, and frankly, we know that we ran out of time, and we're going to look to see what we can do to restart this pilot in the fall. And there are some key things about the pilot that we were not able to get during this time period, was, we were not able to get enough teachers on the system, as well as enough students on the system, to get the feedback that would validate that the solution is absolutely the one that we want to move forward with. So there's some things that we're going to be looking at, that we're going to start up in the fall, but knowing full well that we're trying to compact some of the stuff in, we want to be able to present a solution, we've got some middle school requirements that we need to deal with over the summer. And then also looking at, from a broader standpoint, of knowing that there's a, part of this discussion is about how many resources have been starting to migrate from our own private environment, where we have individual software, things have started to migrate out onto the internet and into what we would call sort of this public cloud. This past spring, we did a test, as we had reported out, where we took kneecap, a writing assessment, at the middle school to understand what would it actually look like if students took the actual test online versus via paper, so we could evaluate what the network and infrastructure implications were going to be, do we need more bandwidth? And so there's a lot of things that have started to come up, that we've realized that, one, you know, we do need more bandwidth, we also need the ability to manage that bandwidth so we can do what we would call as some traffic shaping. And we also know that as mobile devices continue to enter the school district, through teachers getting iPads, other program, or programmatic things where we've actually brought in more iPads or iTouch's to actually do instructional work, that our mobile environment needs to continue to grow. We don't have what I would say is ubiquitous access everywhere, we only have Wi-Fi access in some very selected areas, so we want to continue to grow that area as well. So as we move forward, there's going to be a need here to get the board more engaged with what we're talking about, because there are some flat-out financial implications that we need enough time to budget for, to discuss, and make sure that we're moving in the right direction, and also to make sure that we capitalize on the opportunity to make sure that whatever solution we're looking for and decide on, we get those decisions made so that we can get them ready for the middle school, because decisions are going to have to come up relatively quickly. So I would, you know, state that this will be the first of many, probably relatively often, updates from the technology committee.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Great. So just a reminder that we have two meetings over the next couple of months, July 19th and the 23rd of August, and if I could ask, do I assume they're here?
Yeah, I believe they are, and I'll confirm that.
Is that what this is? Okay.
Do you have the location of those?
I just asked, I think...
And we did put a request in for our meetings through the month of December, and I believe they were both approved, but Randy had suggested there might be a conflict on the next one, so we'll get that out, we'll get an email out quickly to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Anyone opposed?